...before us. The first one is to receive information from ACCG regarding different types of local option sales taxes that are available in the state of Georgia. It's good to see you here today, Dante. And we also have a presentation regarding our credit rating in the county. And we'll also receive a financial update and schedule along with that, which will be brought by Cobb County Finance. And I will turn things over to our Chief Financial Officer to help walk us through today's meeting.
Well, good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. So today is just simply an education session. That's what we're hoping for today as a part of our strategic plan. We are wanting to make sure we got in front of you to talk about some key important issues. And one of the items that has come up that we've asked to be provide some education is revenue diversification. So today is not lobbying for or saying the county's going to move forward in any direction. This is simply an education session. So I've asked Dante to come and give you a sales tax overview of the different types that are available to the counties and just educate you on that component. And then, as you said, the second agenda item, we're going to go through a credit rating update. That's going to be really a 2018 to 2024 look to see what has changed during that time period. And then we wanted to share some quick financial updates for 2025. As you know, our year end is September 30, but we won't receive final year end numbers until March when the audit is concluded. So just want to give a good time and a nice check in to give everybody an update of where we stand today. So with that, I would like to have Dante come up and walk through his presentation.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cupid, members of the Commission. Dante Handel with ACCG. Throughout the presentation, I didn't ask you beforehand, but I'd be glad to either take questions as we go or take questions at the end, whatever's best.
Yes. Commissioners, feel free to ask questions during the presentation. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So starting off, House Bill 581 passed during the 2024 legislative session. And one of the significant things that it did was it tried to clarify which local sales taxes the local governments were able to have. And it used to be a very confusing structure where there are two exempt pennies and there were far more exemptions than local sales taxes that actually applied under that rule. So the current maximum local sales tax rate is 5%. So two unrestricted pennies. And then there are three different buckets that you can pull from to get to that maximum of five. And then House Bill 581 also created a new penny, which we're calling the FLOST, the floating local option sales tax. And that is because it is tied to having a floating homestead exemption or a freeze. So I tried to tailor this to Cobb. The two pennies that are highlighted in bold are the ones that Cobb has currently, so the E.S.PLOST and the S.PLOST. And if we're looking at the bottom, so there are two non-exempt pennies. S.PLOST is one of those non-exempt pennies. And in most jurisdictions, that other non-exempt penny ends up being either a LOAST, which is a local option sales tax, or a HOST, which is a homestead option sales tax. And then those three buckets that I was talking about, the first bucket is the E.S.PLOST, which Cobb has, and that is an exempt penny that doesn't apply against the 2% cap. Then Cobb would also be able to do one of the transportation sales taxes. So it's regional or single-county T.S.PLOST or the transit S.PLOST that was on the ballot last time around. And then the last bucket is the FLOST. There are a couple other pennies, but none of them would apply to Cobb County based on existing law. So the FLOST again is that floating local option sales tax created by House Bill 581.
Dante, have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
Can you explain what you mean by exemptions and then non-exempt?
Yes. So every local government is able to pull from two pennies, no matter what. And then in order to go to a maximum rate of five, those three other pennies have to come from these three buckets. You get up to one cent in each that doesn't apply against your 2% cap.
Okay.
So right now Cobb's S.PLOST is one penny applied against the 2% cap. Cobb's E.S.PLOST is exempt from that cap. So you can do one more penny that doesn't pull from one of those other buckets. And then your other options are one of the transit or one of the transportation S.PLOSTS and the FLOST passed by a 581.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm having a little trouble. I think you can help me advance this slide. Thanks. All right. So a brief overview of what we have throughout the state. If you were to look at a map of Georgia, you would see that the overwhelming majority of counties have a LOAST, a S.PLOST, and an E.S.PLOST. And that's true in over 150 counties, they have the combination of the three. When we look at the LOAST, there are only five counties that do not have one, so Cherokee, Cobb, DeKalb, Gwinnett, and Rockdale. And of those five, two of those counties, Rockdale and DeKalb, have a HOST of some kind and slightly modified for their jurisdictions. So that's that homestead option sales tax. Cherokee had a bill this past legislative session looking at a modified version for their jurisdiction. And there's also a restriction in law that you cannot put a HOST on the ballot if you have a LOAST. So it's an either or between those two pennies. And then we see that the T.S.PLOSTS are fairly popular. There are, I think, three regions that have passed that regional T.S.PLOST, and that aligns with the regional commission regions. And then another 40 counties have gone out and passed a single-county T.S.PLOST on their own. All right. So when we're looking at the LOAST, the local option sales tax is a rate of 1% used for maintenance and operations. Revenue is split between the county and the qualified municipalities. And it is based on a negotiated distribution certificate that's filed with the Department of Revenue. So the Department of Revenue collects the sales tax and then distributes it monthly based on that certificate directly to the county and those cities. You need to get cities representing 50% or more of the qualified municipal population and then any other cities that don't sign on are treated as absent and get a population share. When we're looking at S.PLOST, so it stands for Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, the S.PLOST penny is used for capital projects. That's the special purpose. And what those projects are is spelled out for the voters, I believe with an advertisement in the paper and in the referendum, so they know which projects it is that they're voting on for those capital expenditures. Now, there are Level 1 and Level 2 projects. If it's a Level 1 project, that's a project for countywide benefits. So that would be administrative office buildings for the elected officials, a jail, countywide health facility, items of that nature. Then the S.PLOST funds go to that first. There's also the ability to reserve, I think, 20% of that S.PLOST for other capital projects. E.S.PLOST is the same concept, but is passed by the school board, and that one's used for projects specifically for educational purposes. So similar concept, but for the schools. And then there are three different T.S.PLOST types, regional, single-county, and transit S.PLOST. And then I believe on the next slide, we have a map showing what it looks like in the state. So I misspoke before. We have four different regions that have passed the regional. And then all those blue counties are the ones that have passed the single-county T.S.PLOST over time. And that map's a couple years outdated, so I think there's another one or two that have been added since. Next slide, if you would. So when we're looking at the regional one, again, it's the same as regional commission runs for up to 10 years. There's a lower L-MIG, Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant match on that, so it'd be 10% instead of 30%. And that's part of the benefit for the regional ones. The regional T.S.PLOST came first and then was followed up by single-county in those areas where they couldn't get a regional T.S.PLOST passed. So the single-county T.S.PLOST is levied up to the full 1%. I've never seen an area that hasn't done the full 1%, but it could be done fractionally in increments of .05%. It's done via an intergovernmental agreement with qualified cities. If everyone signs on to that intergovernmental agreement, the tax can run for six years instead of five. And those funds can be spent on transportation purposes, roads, bridges, et cetera. And that one seems to be one of the more popular ones now that there haven't been recent efforts to do the regional T.S.PLOSTS. Next slide. And then the transit S.PLOST is available to counties in the metro area, so in that non-attainment, again, levied up to 1% incrementally. That one can run for up to 30 years, so much longer than the other ones. Again, used for transit projects. And then switching tax types here, looking at a HOST. This is the homestead option sales tax. Again, it's prohibited in counties that levy LOAST, but Cobb does not have a LOAST, so it's eligible for either or. So the procedure is to create a HOST, either have a resolution from the county, a local act passed by a local delegation of the General Assembly, and then it goes to referendum for the voters. And there are two ballot questions. So one is to create a sales tax that will pay for the homestead exemption. And the second is to authorize the homestead exemption that's paid for by that sales tax. Next slide, please.
Yes, please, go ahead. So what does that do to the millage if this is adopted and the homestead is incorporated?
All right. So for all of the homestead properties countywide, that sales tax is going to be used to roll back the millage rate only on homestead properties. So it's a benefit for your homeowners. And it's using sales tax dollars to help offset some of those property tax payments that would be borne by your homestead property owners.
Okay.
And then when we're looking at HOST revenue...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Dante, there's another question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Actually, this will be for Bill. You won't be able to answer this, Dante. In 2018, didn't former Chairman Lee and Commissioner Weatherford look at either doing a HOST or a LOAST for the county?
This, the HOST and LOAST comes up about every four to five years, and we do a re-education on this. I think what you're referring to, and I could be mistaken, but we did look at an O-LOST with the delegation for public safety. And now that, that did not move forward. But that was one of the big pushes that they had is looking at an O-LOST, and that was going to be more for police. That was the, if I'm remembering correctly, that, that was the ask at the time. But this, this does come up frequently because of the rollback components. So it is a conversation that we always like to refresh the board and make sure we are aware of our options.
So is the O-LOST still an option for local governments?
So I'm going to let Dante...
It feels like I'm out of here.
Because we did not receive much traction on that.
So historically, the O-LOST is only in the consolidated governments. And so is an other LOAST penny in addition to the original LOAST penny. There are also a couple jurisdictions that have a constitutionally dedicated E-LOST, where their LOAST penny goes to the schools. But that's from the old constitution and is no longer allowable to create new ones that are current state law.
Like our FLOST, that's not allowed anymore.
Okay.
All right. So when we're looking at the HOST, up to 20% of that revenue can be set aside by the county for capital projects. The remainder is being used to reduce the property tax burden on those homestead properties. And then otherwise, things can be adjusted slightly based on that intergovernmental agreement between the county and the cities. So again, the tax relief's only going to apply to homestead properties. And it's just rolling back the millage rate for homestead only because of the way that the HOST is created, where it's being separately voted on by the voters and is a homestead exemption. It's again only applying to reduce the tax burden on homestead properties, not the other types, unless there is some sort of capital percentage that's retained to try and help offset other items countywide. Yeah. So again, it's an either or between the LOAST or the HOST. The HOST is something that if the county passes a resolution against the, the local act, they're able to go through without cities. It doesn't need to have that same agreement that a LOAST would. Because again, LOAST has a distribution certificate agreed to between the county and the majority of cities filed with the Department of Revenue. The HOST, the counties are able to go it alone with that local act. Still needs to pass both ballot questions. And then there is a delay. I believe that the HOST, once you finally start collecting, it needs to be collected for a full calendar year, and then you provide the relief. So it is delayed by about two and a half years or so. So it's not instant property tax relief. But once it's up and running, you won't experience that delay each time. Next slide, please. And then the FLOST is the most recent, so the newest of the local sales tax types, floating local option sales tax. Again, it is linked to having a floating homestead exemption or a freeze. Cobb County has a freeze on the county property taxes. And then you need to have every city within the county that levies a property tax also have a floating homestead exemption or freeze in effect, either the one passed under House Bill 581 or any locally passed floating homestead exemption or freeze. Next slide, please. So this one requires an intergovernmental agreement between the county and a city or cities representing more than half of the municipal population, only counting cities that levy a property tax. Any cities that don't sign on are treated as absent and receive a population share comparing their population against the city population, and it only comes out of the municipal share, not out of the counties. The intergovernmental agreement specifies the rate, which can run for up to five years. I'm sorry, the duration up to five years, the rate up to a full 1%. And then any renewal of a FLOST requires a local act passed by a local delegation of the General Assembly. So as long as the county and the cities get that intergovernmental agreement, then y'all can put it to referendum. But any renewal will require action by the General Assembly. Now, it's too late in the year, I think, to get a call out for the November date. But if Cobb County and the cities meet the requirements in the future, and we're looking at it again, the next two times are May and November of next year. So again, the cities that are not on the IGA receive a population share, and that's based on the absent municipality provisions in LOAST. Go ahead. And then unlike other local sales taxes, which begin the next calendar quarter, 80 days after the referendum date, the FLOST is 50 days after that referendum date. And the reason that number's important means, excuse me, if you pass it in November, then collections begin January 1st instead of April 1st. So it's a shorter timeline than on the other sales taxes. And the way the money flows on a FLOST, unlike the LOAST, the Department of Revenue collects the funds, sends it directly to the county, and the county pushes it out to the cities in accordance with the IGA. Then the FLOST funds are to be used exclusively for property tax relief. There is one mechanism that the FLOST law allows for y'all to do that. So whatever amount is received by a local government in FLOST dollars is converted to a millage equivalent in the following year. And your rollback rate that you do, your annual rollback rate, is further reduced by whatever that millage equivalent is. So if you don't give all that rollback to the taxpayers, it'll get advertised as a tax increase. And that's a protection the General Assembly put in for the taxpayers. Go ahead. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that y'all have on any of these items.
I do have a question. Can you help in comparing the FLOST and the LOAST program a little bit more? The FLOST seems to be most like the LOAST out of all the other comparisons that I saw. There seem to be some administrative differences as far as how it's applied, but I'm just trying to better understand the impact.
Yes. So the FLOST is used exclusively for property tax relief, which means that in any local government where a FLOST is passed, the county and the cities don't get to receive any net revenue from that without advertising it as a property tax increase. It is a benefit exclusively for the taxpayers and not to enrich those local governments. The LOAST dollars are also used for property tax relief, but the county and the cities are able to keep those dollars. When they show a gross millage rate, they reduce that gross millage by the equivalent of the LOAST dollars, and that gets them back to a net millage. So the LOAST is more popular for generating some additional revenue for the local governments, and the FLOST is exclusively a benefit to the taxpayers.
Okay. I just want to walk through that last explanation again. I did see on that LOAST slide that it can go both towards maintenance and operations. But the way you apply it is the amount that you get allows you to roll back that millage for the taxpayer. And then does the locality receive that difference of funds? Help me understand.
So for the LOAST, it'll show on the tax bill how much you saved that taxpayer. So there's, there's a line there that tells them what they saved absent the presence of the LOAST. Other than that, it has to do with how you show gross millage rates versus net millage rates. So the county sets a gross millage rate, reduces that gross millage by whatever the LOAST equivalent was, and that gets them to a net. But there is the ability to set that net. Because you control the gross, you control where the net gets set.
Okay. So you're showing the taxpayer what the net millage is. That's what they're paying. And then whatever funds... Okay, I'm going to stop there. I'm going to try not to explain. I'm just going to ask a question. You're reducing that to the net. What's the benefit to the local government for reducing that payment to the taxpayer?
So the benefit to the local government is it is sales tax dollars coming in that would have otherwise needed to be property tax dollars. So because you're getting these sales tax dollars coming in that the local government can use for whatever purpose it, it needs to, it prevents y'all from having to raise the millage rate to otherwise receive the same funds from those taxpayers.
I see. Hmm, very interesting.
Do you have something you wanted to add, though?
So it allows a taxpayer or government to have a lower tax rate, but we're still collecting taxes just via sales tax. I know that we had some extensive discussion at one of the policy meetings for ACCG. I think it was the one that was in Henry County. It may not have been a policy meeting. At some point, there is a inflection point where it's a benefit to the taxpayer, and at some point it's not a benefit to the taxpayer based on how much they pay in taxes. There could be some households that could end up paying more in sales tax than the relief that they're ultimately getting through the sales tax. And that, I think, was my concern when we were originally discussing this, as Commissioner Graham said. Several years ago, I was just crunching math, and it was like for persons of certain home values, they could likely pay more based on how much a general consumer is going to spend on sales tax. There may be a point where that's not a relief to them. I think it will relieve those that may be on the upper side of... That's just what I perceive, those that are, have homes that are more expensive, right? See, more relief when you're looking at all of the funds that can come out of a household than those that may pay less in property taxes.
I'd say that there are a lot of different variables at, at play. Most of these are intended to use sales tax dollars to offset property taxes. Now, for anyone who doesn't own property, offsetting property taxes isn't going to help them because they're not paying property taxes.
They're not going to benefit at all.
And then when you're thinking about the sales tax side of things, if you're in a county that has a lot of folks coming into the county from outside the county, there's a benefit where you have out-of-county or out-of-state folks coming in, spending their sales tax dollars here, and that's helping to reduce the property tax burden. So it's, it's a balancing act with a lot of different variables to consider.
Okay. So help me, let's use that as an example. So I'm paying sales tax inside the county. I have other people paying sales tax that come from outside of the county. All of that together is going to be lumped and then reduce the millage based on whatever that total amount is.
For the, the FLOST, it definitely does. For the LOAST, it does. And then that, that millage rate helps anyone who's paying property tax, not just homeowners, but also commercial, industrial, and any non-homestead property.
Thank you for sharing that. And then that is the difference with the floating local option sales tax. There'll be that benefit for those that are homeowners versus...
Now, the floating local option sales tax is helping to reduce the overall millage rate for the maintenance and operations, your MNO millage rate. And that means that it will help all property taxpayers, whether they be homestead or non-homestead. Part of the thinking of the General Assembly during the legislative session was that when they passed the floating homestead exemption, it was helping those homestead property owners, which is shifting some tax burden to all non-homestead properties. And so that would be industrial, commercial, rental properties such as apartments or second homes. And so to try and help those properties that were going to receive some burden shift, they passed the FLOST because reducing the overall millage rate will help them while also providing an additional benefit to the homestead property owners because it helps them as well.
Tell me what the added benefit is for those that have their homestead property under a FLOST?
So for those who had homestead, in many jurisdictions, they don't have a floating homestead exemption or freeze. Cobb does. They have a freeze on the county taxes. So they were, those homestead property owners were already receiving that benefit. The FLOST would help them by reducing the millage rate that they pay. So Cobb's already helping them on the value side.
Okay.
And then it also helps them on the rate side.
I see. Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Is that dual benefit would be more so for those jurisdictions that don't have the floating option sales tax? Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioners. Commissioner Burrow has some questions?
So the LOAST, HOST, and FLOST all have to be approved by the legislature first and then a referendum, county referendum for voters?
I'm thinking about it. The FLOST can be done as long as there's an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the cities. The LOAST, I believe, is the same way, can be put to referendum as long as there is a distribution certificate agreement between the county and the cities. And the HOST would require a resolution of the county, but not the cities. And it would require a local act that affects Cobb County by a local delegation, and that's to put the sales tax in play and the homestead exemption that you need because the two work in conjunction.
Okay. Interesting. Any other questions, Commissioners? Just anecdotally, and you don't have to answer it because it's a judgment, but why do you perceive that there are five counties that are not in the LOAST program?
That, that's a good question. I think LOAST originally was passed by the General Assembly in the 70s. And I think it had to do with local decisions at the time that I couldn't speak to. In those counties that don't have it, in part, I think it's just to keep the sales tax rate down. So Cobb County's at that 6% rate, which is tied for the lowest in the state. Cherokee's another one of those counties that's at 6%. And I think that's a lot of the consideration, just my opinion on it.
Lower sales tax already. Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners? Dante, thank you so much for helping to clarify what these different revenue sources are. We've had discussions about them over time. But even more so, just thank you for your service with the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. I understand that you have another opportunity before you, and you'll be transitioning this week. And I, I want to thank you for your service, not just to Cobb County, in helping us wade through some of the more dense matters before us, but in helping all the counties, all 159 counties here that are a part of our ACCG. You've done a tremendous job, and we respect the work that you've done and also appreciate your service.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the time, and uh, thank you very much for your involvement with ACCG Cherokee. Always a pleasure to help, and at the end of the day, I'm still a Cobb resident. If I can be of service, please let me know.
Yes, we do our bow and curtsey, yes, we're at your service. Thank you, Dante.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, that now takes us to our second presentation, which will be brought by our um Chief Financial Officer, Bill Boltman.
All right, well, thank you, Chair Commissioners. Again, today is just an education session, is really all we're trying to do today. And but we do want to hit some of our highlights. I know in a previous meeting, we talked about our credit rating update, so we received the update for this year, and it's twenty-eight consecutive years. But I do want to talk about kind of how we've gotten here. So I think that's a big part of this message. So in twenty eighteen, we had our first negative outlook. So that's why I want to kind of start there. So twenty-eight years, we've had AAA ratings, but they haven't been without challenges. So with that, I want to go back to twenty eighteen, kind of show you what that picture looked at that time, and then where we are today. So uh, there's some quotes on here that I wanted to share with you. In twenty eighteen, county received AAA rating with negative outlook. This outlook reflected the fiscal challenges the county faced, driven by a projected operating deficit in fiscal year twenty eighteen and a sizable budget gap in twenty nineteen, likely bringing reserve levels significantly below national national medians for AAA counties over the next two fiscal years. So with that being said, that was a call to action for the board, and you'll see in the next section, that negative outlook was removed the very next year. So that is something that I want to kind of walk through what that looked like. So there took a lot of effort during that time period, and there was some decisions made in twenty eighteen of how, what areas we need to focus on and how we needed to improve. Okay, so I apologize if you can't see this, so this is the best screenshot I could get of this. But what we do each year as we prepare for our credit credit rating update is we work with our financial advisors to do a preliminary credit assessment. And this is what it looked like heading into twenty eighteen. Obviously, the red boxes here are negatives or challenges that we had to face. Green boxes are are positives, yellow are basically consistent. Now, this is based on the Moody's Credit Assessment. So they changed their what their methodologies since twenty eighteen, but I'm going to show you what it looks like today. But before we do that, I do want to touch on those. So first red box, you'll see about halfway down under financials. Available operating fund balance as a present percent of operating revenues decreased from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, increased slightly from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. But with that being said, they are significantly lower than our selected peers and significantly lower than median AAA counties. That was an area of focus. Cash balances, the very next line, has been, was decreasing again significantly lower than selected peers and significantly lower than the median AAA counties. Now, we're going to hit some of these, and the other ones here that are also red, but I do want to touch on those. Debt as full value, so they look at debt, all of our debt, including pension and GO bonds, every bond we have outstanding. This was slightly higher than our median AAA counties, which is also that pink shaded box there. So not quite as bad as some of the more darker red, but still in the negative category. The last two boxes that you'll see is the three-year average, and this is our annual net pension um, net pension liability. So those, where those two fall in, and this has been area of focus that we've had, of how do we improve our funding ratio? So I'm going to touch on those. But that's really where we want to focus on, cash, fund balance, and debt. Those were our three focus points as we move forward. And as you know, in twenty eighteen, we raised the millage rate and had the outlook removed. But the focus was not just how do we have the outlook removed? How do we make the county fiscally stronger as we move forward, which is what I want to share with you today? Okay, yes, ma'am, sorry.
No, you're speaking to it, but this is a lot that's here on this slide.
Yes, ma'am.
Either want to take our time to just study it, or can you just walk us through this table?
Absolutely, so this is, this is basically our, this is kind of our scorecard that we do internally with our PFM uh, financial advisor each year. And this really gives us our focal points of where we're going to measure up when we look at Moody's overall ratings. So I'm going to have a very similar one for twenty twenty-four to show you where we are today. But again, green boxes are good, the darker the red, the worse those are. The that pink is still a negative, but it is still a, it is ultimately a negative. So what we're shooting for is how do we get to green? And how do we we get some of those reds gone as we move forward? So again, the reds, we're going to be focused on fund balance, cash, and debt. That's where those center around. The positives are everything else that we have on this, whether you talk about value, uh, value per capita, median incomes, those are all positive. So that's really speaking to the Cobb's value of our uh, tax digest, our value of our economy, that, those were all positives. But some of the decisions that we had to face were going to be cash, debt, as well as fund balance.
Okay, so when you're looking at that first line that says full value, is that the tax digest?
Yes, ma'am, so that is one of the things that we look at, and you'll see that is significantly higher. So these aren't all negatives, as we want to hit these dark green boxes, and those are increasing even in twenty eighteen. So we made some significant improvements, so obviously, we don't want to, sorry. Dante? No, you're fine. Okay, so again, hitting on the, focusing on the negatives here and where we had to go from twenty eighteen. Here is uh, our quote from twenty twenty-five's credit rating, so it's really based on twenty twenty-four numbers. The county's AAA reflects our view of county's robust economy, consistent positive financial performance, maintenance of reserves, proactive financial management practices and policies, and a manageable debt and liabilities. Economic expansion continues to dri- to continues driven by ongoing business investment, new construction, and sprawl from Atlanta. So again, very economy focused, which is what we were positive in twenty eighteen. But we're also added those financial management practices and some of those policies that the board adopted. Talk about fund balance policy and some of those others that we put in place. We also touched on debt in this comment, because in twenty eighteen, the board made the decision to take a proactive focus on our pension. How are we going to actively improve our pension funding? So all of those things took place during that negative outlook. And all of them have come back to a positive today. So the graph does look very different, they've changed their methodology slightly. But you'll notice a lot more, lot more, uh, lot fewer red boxes here. We still have a underperforms, under fund balance and liquidity, which is still going to be fund balance and cash. Okay, now I want to give you a caveat to that. Okay, our lowest point of cash every year is on September thirtieth. Okay, our property taxes come in October fifteenth. So that is by nature where we're going to be. So the positive that they do when they review that is they acknowledge that, and they know our cash, our cash comes in, but literally the next month. So that is something that they do a plus up on their side, but if you just were to say, stop in time, September thirtieth, where are we? It is significantly better in twenty twenty-four than it was in twenty eighteen. Does it still underperform? Yes. Why does it underperform is because of the timing in which we collect our property taxes. So this is something that we made tremendous strides on, but you'll notice that it says underperform, not significantly underperforms, not significantly lower. And also fund balance, we're going to touch on the, some of those. We've made tremendous strides by adopting a fund balance policy, a minimum threshold, and also to set what our general fund and FIRE fund maximums should be and what those will look like. So we've made tremendous improvements in both general and FIRE, but those aren't our only funds. So that is some, something that we have to look at. As a financial rating, they don't view single funds, it is county as a whole. Okay, so when they say cash as a whole, yes, we've improved the areas in general fund and FIRE. Fund balance, we have improved general fund and FIRE, but those are not our only funds. So we have work to do in some of the other funds, so we'll continue to monitor those as we go forward. But, and I know the Chairwoman will echo this when we went up this June, or I think it was maybe end of May. The numbers speak for themselves, the numbers are great, they're like, why are you here? Everything's great, we're here to just make sure, as a check in to say that we're following through with the things we said we would do, and then our numbers reflect that, so that's really what we want to make sure we touch on.
When we set our reserve policy as a board, did we set it just for the general fund?
General and FIRE.
And FIRE, so it didn't take into consideration all of the county?
That is correct.
Or operation?
The reason we set those two are those are two funds controlled by millage rates. And by law, some of our other funds actually will have to finish the year with a zero fund balance. Now, even though by law, they have to fill, finish the year with a zero fund balance, you still count their revenues. So artificially in the calculation, it does come in back to hurt us. So I'm going to give you an example. Hotel motel taxes are collected and spent within the same year. By law, every year that fund has to end with a zero fund balance. Still brings in twenty-two million dollars plus of revenue, so those are still part of the calculation. So water fund, same thing, you know, we, ideally, that is a business-type fund, and those funds are to roll into fund balance and then design for projects as we move forward. But obviously, we don't want to carry a large fund balance, and that'll be part of the future slide we'll show you. So we have a lot of different areas that impact this, but we can say that the areas that we can control in general and FIRE, we have done a tremendous job improving those since twenty twenty, or twenty eighteen. Okay? Okay, so I'm going to let the, let you look at this slide for a minute, but again, I want you to look at that very first column, it's greens across the board. Every category is improving since twenty eighteen. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, every category you have on this list is improving, which is exactly what we want to see. You couldn't ask for anything more than that. Some of these where we have residential income, full value per capita, they're outperformed by our selected peers, but they're consistent with the AAA average. And that is really what we want to measure ourself against. As a AAA county, yes, we can put ourself up against our peers, but that's what we want to look at, it's the national average for AAA counties. Are we measuring against the best of the best? And this, in this case, we are consistent with them, which is exactly where we want to be. We do not want to be outperforming them, we want to be consistent with AAA counties. Okay, now, one of the things that you'll notice is the long-term liability ratio, slightly different. Those are now greens across the board. The county has taken a tremendous effort during this time to pay off debt, improve pension, and we're going to touch on what that exactly looks like. But that was one of the big red boxes that we saw in twenty eighteen. So think about all the things that we've done since then, we've paid off the parking deck bonds, we've paid off any bond that we can, and we've also made significant improvements to pension, which is our biggest liability that we have outstanding. And we really haven't issued any bonds since twenty eighteen. We haven't issued any new debt, so we have made tremendous strides in reducing that and improving that category. Now, I know the AAA rating is there, and it is there to help us get the best rate when we decide to issue debt, so it is not to say that we shouldn't issue debt in the future, or we can't issue debt in the future. It is absolutely there for that reason, but the areas that we have controlled have significantly improved those. Any questions on this graph? I know it looks a little different, but again, focusing on those first few columns that all green across the board is a tremendous win. That is something that you as a board have shaped that process and made significant improvements. Good? Okay. So I do want to show you this, put some numbers and graphs to these tables here. So the very first one is available fund balance ratio. So I highlighted our two green, or our two red boxes for twenty-three and twenty-four. So you can kind of see how we do compare and who we compare to. So that is the graph on the left, and then the liquidity ratio is really going to focus in on our cash balances. Again, also how we compare. We already touched on why our cash balance looks the way it does on September thirtieth.
I perceive there's no way to take into consideration that if you were to look at what our cash balance is October fifteenth and compare it to this chart, does that move us?
It, the challenge with that is going to be getting year-end numbers for each of these, because everybody has a different fiscal year-end. So this has to be based on the audited financial statements, which is part of the challenge. Now, what I will say is, as we talked about earlier, the rating agencies are part of that conversation and are very aware of when our taxes are due and our taxing authority. So it is something that when they would do this hard calculation, I can tell you that we would not score a AAA in this category by any means. Now, it is something that they have the ability through committee to plus up, knowing the fact that we will do, we do get taxes in every October, and we also share with them our collection rate, and it's a very stable historical collection rate, so it is something that they can rely on as they move forward. Now, the good news with that is also you have already approved the millage before the end of the fiscal year, so they know exactly what that's going to be.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, now, I do want to point out a little note at the bottom. Moody's does have the right, as with any rating agency, to change their methodologies, which is why those tables look different when we talk about the red, you know, the green boxes and the red boxes. Now, Moody's does not include restricted cash, such as the FIRE fund, capital projects funds, and debt service ba- fund balances. So now, we don't have a debt service fund balance anymore because we no longer have general obligation bonds, but we do, even though we're improving FIRE, when they take in cash considerations, it is only available for FIRE. So they do not include it as part of that, their calculation now, moving forward. So in twenty eighteen, they viewed it globally, so when we say globally, it doesn't count for all funds, but they have the ability to say, we're going to carve pieces out of those, what we're not going to include. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't have the same financial practices and policies for the FIRE fund as we do for the general fund, because we absolutely should, and it shows that we have plus, uh, very positive financial policies. Any questions on this slide? But I wanted to make sure you could see the comparisons with the, the light peers. Very good. Okay, now, even though we are under, underperforming some of these categories, I do want to show you kind of where we have moved the needle since twenty eighteen. So the graph on the left is fund balance as a percentage of revenues. So we are now in twenty twenty-four, right about forty percent countywide. Now, that, don't let that confuse you from what we say general fund and FIRE. General fund and FIRE, we've capped at fifty percent is the maximum that we can have before we have obligations to reduce that. This is a county-wide analogy and as we go through these. So is the calculation on the right, which is our cash balances. So you'll see the biggest increase in twenty twenty-one. Does anybody remember what happened in twenty twenty-one? Okay? Got federal dollars in, and also we had COVID. And in that year, we budgeted zero tax growth increase. We took a very conservative approach, and we put those, those dollars into reserves. So that was a, a decision that the board made because we weren't sure how COVID was going to impact that. But as you said, we also got federal dollars that came into play as well. So those are where we started to see that big change. We saw policy changes in twenty eighteen, s- uh, sustained growth in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, significant growth in twenty twenty-one. We brought that back down as those federal dollars were spent and continued to be spent through twenty twenty-three, and then we've had positive growth in twenty twenty-four as well. Okay, any questions on this slide? Yes, Chairwoman?
So are you telling us, based on the prior slides, that this fund balance as a percent of revenue is lower than other counties?
Absolutely.
That are triple, triple-A counties?
Yes, ma'am.
So our forty percent is low?
Yes, I know, right? That's, and that's, that's why I wanted to show you this, because just saying, hey, this is where we compare to the other counties, and you can see that on a graph, and then you see our forty percent number is low, that is, that is in fact how it, how it is measured. So, and here's the other part of that equation. When we talk about fund balance, please remember, that's not cash. Okay, at the end of the year, a big chunk of our fund balance is going to be receivables, it's going to be buildings, it's going to be everything you own. Okay, so that's why they measure those separately, is our fund balance is here, what does our cash look like? And even if, so for example, the general fund will typically have three hundred million dollars in property tax receivables, which count at, towards fund balance. We don't have access to those on September thirtieth. So it is a big part of that conversation as we move forward. Okay, any other questions on this slide? Very good. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner, sorry.
I'm trying to look real quick, but I haven't gotten there. So going back to Dante's presentation.
Yes.
Any of these counties that have a higher fund balance or cash balance percentage than what Cobb does?
Sure.
Do they have the T S P L O S T connected to it? And is there any relationship between the T S P L O S T and the cash or fund balance that's required?
So a lot of these are going to be, I I don't have the T S P L O S T information for you. Um, I will say to drive your cash balance, one of the, not to advocate for one or the other, but obviously, we talked about the timing in which we collect cash for property taxes. If you had a sales tax or another revenue source that came in monthly, that would very significantly change your cash balance at the end of the year. Okay, so that, that is where that would have an impact, fund balance. That would still come into how much do you want to put in the reserves versus part of your reoccurring budget process? So that would come down to a policy decision there as well. But I will say from a cash standpoint, if you imagine that we had three hundred million of taxes outstanding at the end of the year, but you were collecting that monthly, that number would be significantly less, and more that, more of that would be in cash at the end of the year. So you'd have that ability to decide how you wanted to receive those funds, because ours is very unique, and it does not work out well from a timing perspective for our year-end. There's a lot of different approaches that if the board was looking at something different for that, we could talk about what that would look like. Anything from, you could break up tax collections to twice a year versus once a year. Same number, but you're getting it in at different phases of the year. So that is the challenge with having a revenue source, mainly one in the general fund that's roughly sixty percent coming in one time a year, and it's after the year closes. So that is a challenge for us as we navigate through that process. So, uh, but I can, I'll work with um, ACCG. I can, I'll work with ACCG and pull which of these counties have a T SPOST or maybe even a host or lost as well, because that does factor in. Okay?
Along those lines, has there been consideration for a different fiscal year?
So that was a question that was asked. I think Commissioner Weatherford was here the last time it was asked, and I think at that time, I said if I had, if you gave me $100 million, I could, we could definitely do it. The reason why that matters is because if you change the fiscal year, then that one year, you will have all your expenses with no property tax revenue. So that's where that becomes a challenge. So just imagine what that does to your reserves at that year. So that's where that kind of conversation ended, but it was, it's, it's a big, it's a big change. Trust me, we would much rather have-
We got it even before that.
Yes. Yes, we, you're right, Commissioner, we did. But I was, I think that was the last time that was asked, and I would say that number would be much higher today.
You'd have to take a huge step back to-
Yes.
-take any steps forward.
I, I think that would be a decision that the board would have, if the board was interested in that, because again, ours is very unique. You don't have a lot of September 30th year ends. You have a lot of June 30th, you need a lot of calendar year ends. Obviously, being on the state and federal cycle makes it a little bit easier. I will say it makes it us a little easier to get auditors, because there's not a lot of September 30th audits to be done.
Interesting.
Yeah. So we get a little, little help there. Yes, Commissioner?
This might be a crazy question, but the increase in the tax digest?
Yes.
Does that not have any effect on this? Because-
It does.
This year, it was lower than previous years.
Yeah.
But according to this chart, 23, this was lower than 24.
Yeah.
The digest was higher in 23 than 24.
So the tax digest is going to have a positive impact on your fund balance. That's where you're going to notice that, more so than anything, in any given year. So in strong growth of digest years, you're going to see that fund balance chart is very consistent. We've had strong growth. But remember, this includes other funds. So where it doesn't have as big of an impact is on cash, because obviously, we won't have that cash within that same fiscal year. Now, we did have a drawdown of a lot of federal dollars in 23, which brought that, that fund balance, or that cash number down, because remember, we got the full, you know, 100-plus million of ARPA money in the bank, and we've now spending that down as we go. Now, part of that also is going to impact other funds as we go through this process. So we've tried to make sure we've infused as much cash into this as we can, and we try to make those decisions. But like, think about even, you know, when we talk about some of our loans that we've given to SPOST, or funding we've given to SPOST, those can have an impact. So I know we just approved RAP, and part of that was discussing what, you know, what we want to do, some of those loans outstanding. That has, that has an impact. But also, when we do large capital projects, we design to build a capital reserve, so it is available for those capital projects. It looks great when we're not spending it, but then it is there to be spent on specific capital projects. So as we build it, it pluses us up, but then when we spend it, it goes down. So this is something that we want to walk through, but I'm going to show you on a future slide, really the two big drivers are going to be general and water. Those are our two biggest funds, and we'll show you what that looks like. Okay? Welcome. Okay. And as promised, here's the, I'm going to start with the outstanding debt slide, though. So I just wanted to show you on this, since 2018, the county has reduced its debt by over 204, $204 million, while improving cash balances in both general and the water funds. The general fund millage rate has remained flat at 8.46 mil since 2018, and the pension funding ratio has increased from 51.56% to 63.9% since 2018. So we've made some significant improvements in this. But to Commissioner Burrow's point, one of the things I want you to see is the graph on the right. Okay? The blue is the general fund, and you can see that's where you've made the most improvement, general fund and cash balances, because all of that fund balance and cash can be counted towards this calculation. Water fund has remained a little bit more consistent. They haven't seen as much growth, and we saw some growth in, going, heading into 21, and then we've been pretty close to, from 21, 22, 23, 24, have remained pretty flat. So that is something that we want to look at, and you know, again, because we look at this globally, and the biggest driver of this is some of the increased costs that we've seen in the water fund. We've seen water purchases, chemicals, sludge handling, as well as the capital projects that we need to do out of the water fund. So that has helped hold that cash more flat than we've seen in the general fund. The general fund's been more consistent on holding that line on capital funding, and we've also been able to be very, make some very good budget decisions that we've gone through this process. But the big driver, as you said, Commissioner, is, is we have strong digest growth. We're going to see that slow. Now, it does take a little bit of decisions of how we want to use those funds, but that's one of the factors that does play into here as we move forward. But I did want to share that because I thought 204 million in reduced debt since 2018 is a big number. And then moving, it may not sound like a lot, but I feel like we were at 50% funded for the pension fund for what felt like a decade, and we are now pushing 63. A healthy pension fund for the, just for the board's information, is roughly 80%. So that is where we're looking to go, but we have closed it, so we are paying this off and making significant strides as we've gone through this process. So that was a big jump. Yes, Commissioner, any question?
So the water transfer could go to zero, and the general fund is okay?
I did, I did not say that. That is a board decision. Begin, because remember, you have two components to this. You also have budget versus cash and fund balance. So I would say if the, if the transfer went to zero, would it help water? Yes. Would you have some tough budget decisions to make in general fund? Absolutely. So again, anything's possible if, if, if you want to, if we want to have those conversations, and the good news is we're about to kick off 27 budget process here this month.
Bill, can you share what's contributing to the outstanding debt?
Yes. So a big part of that's going to be our pension liability. That's our biggest component. And then we also have our stadium bonds, which are our next biggest portion of that. And then we have some, we have some water bonds and some water loans that we have outstanding. So that's really going to be your big components, because we no longer have any general obligation bonds. We've paid off the parking deck bonds, got those taken care of, and then we've also made some, and I won't be reflected on here yet, but we also are planning to make some reductions to Six Flags Special Service District bonds in 2025, 2020, 2026. We will be making that reduction, so we'll see that come down a little bit more. So that is one of the areas that the board has focused on, is as we have some ability to make some decisions with some dollars, they have, historically have used those dollars to pay off bonds, and that has been a big help.
Okay.
And you have definitely met and exceeded your annual obligation to pension each and every year to help close that gap. So that has been a great conversation with you as the board, as that doesn't come up of if we should fund it, it is always, we are going to fund this. This is our obligation, and we move it forward, just like we do with any other outstanding debt that we have. So, okay. All right. Okay. So that's the credit rating piece. We do want to talk about quick financial update and schedule. All right. So this is a very high-level view. As you know, we close the fiscal year September 30th, so we don't have year-end numbers yet. And even when I say we close the year, we really don't close the year until closer to December, then we go through the audit process, and we have the final numbers in March. But I do want to give you an update here. So as we go through this process, we expect the general fund, the fire fund, the parking deck fund, the water operating fund, and the golf course fund to all have very strong years again this year. The ones that we're marking more neutral are hopefully, ideally, ones that we should expect to be neutral. CSBG is our grant fund. We expect that to be neutral each and every year. Law Library Fund is a very small special revenue fund. Again, we ideally, that should break even each and every year. And then our hotel motel legally has to finish with zero at the end of the year. Our Cumberland Special Service Districts 1, 2, 1 and 2, and our Six Flags, we also expect to finish revenue neutral as we use the Cumberland funds to help fund the debt service on the stadium bonds. And we've already talked about the plan for Six Flags to reduce that debt as we move forward, because this will be the last year that we were able to collect any, or sorry, last year was the last year we could collect any property taxes. And then transit fund, again, we saw significant improvements in our fare box revenue, but again, that would expect to finish neutral, as the other component of that is passenger fares, grants, and then general fund contributions. So as they do not need general fund contributions, or may not need as much, we would simply not send as much. So that is part of that process as we walk through that. And then our sustainability fund, Sustainability Beautification Fund, again, general fund component of that. So we simply finished the year as a, as a net neutral there. One of the items I do have listed here, I debated whether we'd put this as a yellow triangle or red stop sign, is our claims fund. This is something that we have increased funding for. It is something that we are watching closely, though. It is, it is struggling a little bit this year, as we've seen increasing claims, increase, increase in legal fees and things of that nature that may cause this to finish slightly below neutral as we head into the year. But we're looking forward to closing that out. It's not going to be a significant impact, but it is something that we are monitoring. The only red stop sign that we have, and I've talked to Melissa about this, and we've, we've had conversations with each of the board members, because we all know this, this is a challenge, is 911 will continue to lose, lose funds and eat into fund balance as they are still capped at the $1.50 per line. And currently, there is no general fund contribution heading into the 911 fund. We did adopt the 26 budget with that same methodology to eat into fund balance, assuming no change. But by 2027, this is something that we'll have to take into consideration. If there is no change to the $1.50, that the general fund will begin, need to contribute to the 911 fund as they will deplete fund balance. Yeah. So just want to put that out there. I know that's a conversation we've all had, and I know it is a discussion that, that hopefully, we can have with the state this year and see where that goes. But if, if no change, that would be something in 2027, the general fund would be contributing to 911 to help support their operations. And it is a common, it is something that is pretty common throughout the state, but just, it'll be new to Cobb. Cobb County has always been very fortunate to have the revenue to support the operations. Any questions on the quick, high-level snapshot? And we will give you a year-end update in March when we have the final numbers as well. Very good. Okay. Just want to touch on schedule real quick. We have a lot going on. We are starting kickoff for 2027 this month. We're actually doing some community education classes. We already had one for millage and tax, working with the Tax Assessor's Office and Tax Commissioner's Office. And in October, we will be doing the new fiscal year-end, fiscal year starts, but we will also have a community education class on budget. And then departments' project lists are due to us on October 1, and we are going to consolidate those and make sure the board receives full copies of all the requests that are out there. And we are actually meeting with you individually as board members now to get your priorities prior to those going out, so that way, we can make sure that they are incorporated in a, one consolidated list, and that we have everything there for you to begin to review. In November, we are going to have, that will be when we preliminary close our year for the audit. The auditors actually come in in November and start, basically live with us through the end of March. And then in December, we have, departments are required to submit by the end of December, all their 2027 budget requests. Prior to that, we'll be meeting with you again to get priorities from you, and then we'll consolidate all of those, make sure those priorities are incorporated in the departmental requests, and then present you again, one consolidated list through the budget binder process like we've done in the years past. And April, what we've asked to do is move up our work session presentation to April to give you that request for 2027, kind of walk through that. And then in May, we're going to, the board would approve the 2028 SPOST agreements. June, we have, the board would approve the resolution for the ballot language for the 2028 SPOST. The 2027 budget will be presented. We'll have ratings meetings ideally in June or May. We will work on that as we get closer. And then July, we'll have the public hearings, the adoption for budget millage, and then November, we'll, public will vote on the 2028 SPOST. So that's a lot going on in the next year. A lot of big, big decisions financially that as we'll move through these, but then obviously, we'll work with you very closely to keep you involved in that process and make sure we have accounted for your input and help, help us drive that process, or really, I guess we'll help, help y'all drive that process. We'll just provide you the information. But a lot going on. Any questions on schedule for me?
No questions on schedule, Bill, but just thought you might share with the board maybe what you shared with me during our finance discussions with respect to budgeting for next year, and how we may need to consider our revenue sources and how they meet our current operations and obligations.
Absolutely. As a part of, one of the things that we do each year is we do a five-year projection, and that is something that we're watching. Obviously, with the digest slowing in 2025, that is something that we're going to watch as we go forward, so we can see where the expenditures have increased over the last five to 10 years, and where those pressure points are. And I can tell you that those are increasing at a faster rate than what the digest would sustain currently today. So we will have some tough discussions as we move into 2027's budget process, because we don't foresee those, you know, 8, 6, 8, 10% growth in digest moving forward. We're going to see something much more, much, much smaller as we go through this process. So we, we were at three plus last year. We're probably looking at something around two, but again, we'll work very closely with the tax assessor after Jan 1, of what that will look like. A lot of our revenue sources are pretty stagnant as we go through this process, but a part of our 2027 process is to review all revenue sources and rates to make sure that we are keeping up with the market. And obviously, those will come back to you as a board to say, these are the department's recommendations for any tweaks to any rate structures or anything like that. But that is part of our process. And again, today was an educational session to say, hey, what other options are available. But as Dante said, none of those, if, if the board were ever decided to go to a sales tax option, it's not something that happens overnight. This is a long process. So it is not something that you enter into quickly or lightly. But again, just want to make sure that the board is aware of all the options that are before them when we get into those tough, tough conversations for 2027. But we do anticipate a lot of those slowing down, and it is, it, you know, could present some challenges in the future, but we'll have to, again, evaluate that, working with the Tax Assessor's Office, and then also get the commissioner's priorities, department priorities of what, what will be ultimately included in 27. So we're, we're kind of just, you know, using that forecasting method to say, basically, we're just sustaining the growth that we've seen in the past, and we know where some of those pressure points are based on historical spends that have maybe outpaced some of the other ones. So, and those, and part of that can be decisions on, you know, what, where do the dollars need to go? So we'll definitely walk through that and have some probably very in-depth conversations about during that, as 27 will be the first year of the biennial budget process. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Bill, for your presentation. Commissioners, we've been asked to go into exec following this meeting to discuss a legal matter. So with that, I'll take a motion to go into exec.
Sir, my-
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor is raise your hand. I guess we could have called the question. I'm so used to doing this upstairs. We could have just called the question. I think we all supported it. Yes, Pam got us. Why don't we meet upstairs as 2:45, okay?
Well, I have to leave at 2:55.
You have to leave at 2:55? Okay. Why don't we meet up there in about five minutes then? All right. See you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.